You ready?
Ready.
Denise, you ready?
I'm ready.
At the Board of Selectmen's meeting with Thursday, April 25th, 2019, Tewahatta, please join us in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of allegiance and flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual liberty and justice.
Thank you. In this meeting, be aware the meeting is being recorded for use on Internet and the local cable station. We're gonna maybe take one out of order there, like Board, ADA Training Boards and Committees and Employees. Have the floor.
Okay. Just wanted to bring folks' attention and see if we can maybe communicate out to the boards and the committee members to that we're providing the opportunity for folks to learn more about the ADA and more about what our obligations are to the community of West Bridgewater in regards to accommodations or things that people may need at their homes. Well, they're attending meetings. We will hold it on May 21st at 6:00. It'll be an hour and a half. We have a representative from the Massachusetts Office of Disability that will be running the presentation. We're also looking for John Pollens, who's head of the media department at the high school, to provide us with headphones for a demonstration. That was brought up last year. In fact, that was one of the reasons why we kind of decided to present and get in touch with the MOD on the training. There was a Facebook post and somebody had made a comment that with the high school that we have, you know, how come there isn't something for folks that are challenging, have auditory processing or auditory issues to be able to hear better? And in fact, when we did some research, there are headphones. So for the town hall meeting that will be coming up in June, this would be a great opportunity. We can do a demonstration at the presentation on the 21st and give folks the opportunity to reach out to us if they need assistance with that for the town hall meeting that's coming up in June, then we'll be able to help them with that.
How is this being circulated to the other boards and commissions? Has it gone out via email or?
I'm not sure if it's gone out via email. I did ask if it could be. I know I came in this week and I put the agenda in each of the mail slots of the departments in the Parks Office, but it would be greatly appreciated if it can be sent though through email to all the boards and committee members and town employees as well.
Is that something you wanna do? Right. Well, thank you, Joan, for your effort with this. I plan to attend and I hope others will too.
Great. I appreciate that.
Anthony, you have any comments?
No. Thank you.
I want to thank you for all the work you put in this and I'm going to try to attend the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along on warrants in Board of Selectmen Business Bylaw Study Committee Recommendations. Are you the chairman there?
I am.
Oh, you're okay. You got the... Who care you? I know that I was just talking to Mr. Kruger about this earlier, of course. So I don't know how you want to do it, go down through them or?
Okay. Well, we would ask to review several.
Right.
And I believe that the board has a copy of...
Yeah, we have a copy. You got a copy?
Kruger explains all of them, so I won't go into the ones we're not recommending. There's going to be a... I'm taking note of it. The terrorism. The Sealer awaits some measures with something asked by your board to change it. That's a general bylaw change and we recommended it. Next one, Article 43 is to remove cigar wrappers. This was something that was put in a number of years ago and it was somebody asked to do, you know, remove it because it's really no longer a pertinent thing and we recommended it and it's in here. Article 44 is one that was proposed by the Conservation Commission. A number of years ago, the Planning Board introduced a... When you create a new lot, you have to have 100 foot square. The reason we did it was for gerrymandered lots. We have a few engineers and developers that are quite imaginative when it comes to fitting as many lots as they can and it causes problems. Well, the Conservation Commission wanted to take it one step further where they didn't want to see any wetlands or the 50-foot buffer there too within this 100-foot square. So what it's doing, it's... Some of these lots really shouldn't be there anyways. It's making them so the lots would be nicer, more friendly. The Kharkom is running into problems where virtually you come out the back door of a house and it's wetlands there and it doesn't, really doesn't make a very livable situation for somebody to have a house lot where you kind of can use it because it's a protected wetland. The next one is Articles 45. This pertains to parking. In our zoning, we have the number of parking spaces required for various activities and one of them that was way under covered was places of assembly and a restaurant. What was... What is currently in there is one parking space for every four seats. Well, when people go to a restaurant, half the time, you see them, they come in in their own cars, even a couple will, or somebody meeting, to have the, you know, to think that four people are going to come in a car. Half the cars, you can't even get four people in anymore. They're so small. But we did a lot of research and some towns had numbers of per the tables and then employees, others combined it. And what we did is we came up with one where we combined it so we don't... Some have the table, the seats and for the number of employees. We just combined it all for the number of seats, the two and a half, one space for every two and a half seats. That should cover the participants, the patrons, as well as the staff. This, one of the things that kind of brought this to mind was the conversion of the Kharkom to a church and it's a very successful church and they fill that parking lot up. They have to have police details and stuff because they do have so much traffic coming in.
And that is, Anthony, you had to have two police officers up there.
Right. And so we're just trying to have something that's realistic. We've had instances in town where restaurants are doing very good business, so people packing out in the streets. You know, we can go half a mile this way and half a mile that way and we can come up with two very good ones. So that was one proposed by the Planning Board. Then we have Article 46. This was requested by the attorneys for the medical marijuana facility on Maple Street. Whereas our bylaw had the distance from the property line to the residential property line, they want to change it to the facility, which is in keeping with what the Commonwealth, the state has. They're using the facility. One of the things we added to it was that the, was to define the facility and also what we wanted to do was include the parking spaces and, you know, the improved portion of the law. If they have a bunch of lawn or landscaping, that is not part of it, but the parking lot, any storage, you know, if they want to put a storage container out there or something, that it's, would have to be the distance away from the town residential and that did it. Well, the last one, which is 48, is not a zoning bylaw, but the Planning Board is proposing to accept Pearl Road in the public street. So that takes care of the bylaw study committees and the Planning Board.
Thank you very much. Board, you got any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I have a question on Article 45, the parking one. How would that impact businesses that aren't, that don't conform now when they're... I'm assuming it wouldn't have any impact now, but when they change hands?
It's, I don't think it should, it's that because it's, you know, ex post facto, it's in place, it's grandfathered. But if they're going to put an addition on, you know, increase their capacity, if they're undersized now and they decide they want to put a, you know, add on a function room that's going to hold 50 people or something and they don't have the parking they got already, then it would definitely affect them. But I don't believe, but there may be something you want to ask Town Council Board. I don't believe it should.
Okay. And do you have an idea of how many current businesses would not be conforming if this were to change? Obviously, as we said, they'd be grandfathered in, but do you have any idea how many with the change to two and a half, how many would no longer be?
Did you say cap businesses?
No, no. Any business, whatever business. How many would not be, would not conform with this change? Do you know?
No. I don't know.
All right.
But you mean like in existing?
Yeah, just how many would now be out of?
Well, we have, we have a lot of restaurants in this town that are undersized and it shows. All you have to do is go there Friday or Saturday night and you'll see the cars parked on the grass, cars parked out on the street or so, yeah. There actually are several restaurants that would not do it just because they're already failing now. They don't have enough as it is now, so.
Okay. And I think we should go over the, it looks like there's one that wasn't recommended just in case we disagree.
Could we go back to finish? I have the same question on the article you mentioned. Is there actually language in the bylaw that refers to it being grandfathered if there's already a pre-existing non-conforming business?
Yeah, I think that's just in the general zoning and enabling act. It's in the, if it's already there, it's grandfathered.
Okay.
The only thing is, is expansions.
I want to hear from them first.
Yeah. What I would be concerned about is if a business changed hands. So if you have a restaurant that's non-conforming, pre-existing, and that is sold, I would expect that grandfather clause to continue on.
As long as it's basically the same kind of restaurant or same kind of usage, yes. It would. I would think it would, definitely.
That would be one thing I'd want clarity on because I wouldn't want to see someone who owns a business, a success, a successful business and be looking to sell it, have a buyer, and then find out this bylaw restricts the use.
Yeah, so the answer to that would be that if it were to exchange hands and it stayed as the same business, it would still remain grandfathered in. However, if there was a two-year lapse in between one owner to the other, then they no longer have grandfather protection. So if somebody were to go out of business and it took more than two years for them to exchange hands, then they would fall under the new provision.
Okay. Thank you. And the other bylaw that I wanted to see if we could discuss, but I actually, I don't have the level of expertise that's needed to discuss it, so I was hoping Rick would. I believe it is...
Article 44.
Forty-four. Forty-four. I don't know if you were planning to discuss that one at all, Anthony?
I didn't have any question on that one. No, I just, my question was, so the bylaw study committee recommended that one not go on the warrant, but I think we should go over it anyway just in case this board disagrees with the study committee.
Okay.
I don't, but just in case, I don't disagree with the...
Which one is that?
The one that's listed on here is the unregistered motor vehicle may not, that one. That's the one you're not recommending, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So is that, is that the one that comes from Crescent Street that we, that he was... Okay.
Yeah, we, the town clerk did a lot of research around with the other town clerks. She called them up and says, "What does your bylaw say?" And they just sent it over and it was something that nobody had that and it kind of came in, it could be kind of vague at times what it was and it really, we couldn't get behind it. It just wasn't, didn't have a comfortable feeling with it.
Yeah. I'm in agreement that that one shouldn't be on the warrant, but I thought we should at least go over it.
Okay.
I'm in agreement.
I would be in agreement too. It shouldn't be on the warrant.
Which is?
That was the article he's talking about.
Shouldn't be on.
I agree with you.
Okay.
I agree.
All right. We'll get their hands up. Neil, you add your hand up and I'll give it to Rick afterwards. Go ahead, Neil.
Give it to you, Scott.
Okay, Rick.
On Article 44, that article doesn't make much sense to me. If you've got, I know why they did the, because of the pork chop lots and that, they wanted to do the 100 by 100 foot square, but now the conservation wanted to add 50 more feet onto it, it doesn't make any sense at all. It's got to make almost every lot in town unusable. The reason is, if this is your frontage and it's 125 feet and you've got one foot of wetland and you've got to come in 50 feet and you've got to try to put the 100-foot block in here, you just used up 51 feet of it. How are you going to fit the block in? It's not going to fit. You've got to come from your frontage, 35 feet in for your front off the road, you've got to come in 35 feet. Now you're back to 135 feet. If you've got one foot in the back, just one foot of wetlands, you're not even going to be able to fit that square in hardly. You're going to have, I think it's 15 feet, if you had 15 feet of wetlands in your backyard, that would make all the legal lots, 125 by 200 feet, 30,000 square foot lots with just a couple feet of wetlands on them, can't use them because you can't forget, you can't, that is making that 100-foot block actually a 200 by 200 because you've got to be 50 feet off of each wetland. So if you come in 50 and if you add another foot over here, you'd be in 100. It's only 125 feet wide. You can't put a 100-foot block in there. So I don't think, it's not going to work. I spoke to the building inspector about it and he said, "No, I didn't catch that. It's not going to..." If you've got to come in 35 feet, it's going to eliminate most of the lots in town. He said most of the lots that have been built on the last few years would not fit that criteria, so.
You have any feel about that?
And I think the other one that I had a problem with is the article that Hugh was just talking about, 45. I think that there should be wording in there that says any business, because in our town, if you buy a business, you've got to go back to the town, you get a permit to do business in town, you've got to go planning board or the Board of Appeals to take that business over. And I think that it should be spelled out that they're going to be allowed, anybody from the time this vote takes place, that they can take over the business with the original four seat, four seats. But I do agree with what Hugh, you know, they're trying to change going to two and a half seat for each parking space. That makes more sense. But anybody designing a new restaurant or a new business, that makes sense. They have to make a bigger, a bigger parking lot or they have to have more land to do what they want to do. But we got a lot of businesses in town that we allowed over the years to do business and what we're going to do is we're going to stop them from having a market to sell their restaurant when they want to retire or something like that because we're the ones who put them in that predicament. We told them that they could have one parking place for each four seats. So I think that after, this article should say, after the vote takes place on that night, anything new meets that new criteria unless somebody like Hugh said, if they're going to make a major change, they're going to buy a restaurant, they're going to double the size of the place, then that's a different case. But if they're going to take home, it should be spelled out so that it's just not left up in the air so somebody comes in for a hearing and one person gets it, the other person doesn't. I think it should be spelled out so everybody's treated the same.
Comment for that?
I mean, I don't disagree with that. That's the first question I had is how does it impact existing businesses?
Can I...
Go ahead.
Mr. Kruger said, was saying businesses. Well, this is places of assembly and restaurant. A business with an office or a store, those have different criteria. Most of it's on by square footage. The industrial employment, that's usually by, I believe that's by number of employees that's in there. But an office building, it's by square footage, so this doesn't even apply to that. What this is, is places of assembly and restaurants, it's places where you have a large group of people coming in there. And I believe as Mr. Gagny pointed out, it's already in there, the fact that you can carry it on, it is grandfathered although the two-year lapse will cut it out.
And there is some leeway, room in here if, to go to the Board of Appeals because a lot of these, they have to go to the Board of Appeals anyway, so they're in there with a special permit. So if they can demonstrate that what they, they have, the type of business they have isn't going to be there, you know, then they could get it. So there is, there is some room in there.
Leeway there.
Yeah. We're mainly looking at, you know, we can see the problems that are there. Unfortunately, the Planning Board is probably misnamed because it isn't a planning board that much. It's reactionary board. We see a problem and we try to react to it and this is something that is, we've seen in several different instances with the latest one being a very obvious one that they were undersized with. So we are reacting to the problems, what we're there. And as far as the one with...
If you want to say something this time?
I just wanted the board to make sure they were fully informed. Hugh, correct me if I'm wrong, if a existing restaurant were to attempt to change hands, sell its property, it was no change of use and it happened within two years, you would not require another site plan review. Right. So if it is under two years and it changes hands from one vendor to another and does not change use restaurant to restaurant or substantially similar, then they would still receive grandfathered in status. If it exceeds two years, they would be then under the new bylaw. I just want you to understand that because if you want to take into account Mr. Kruger's recommendation, then you would want to add language in here that says that that company or that business is forever grandfathered in. And I'm not suggesting that you should. I want to make sure that if you like what Mr. Kruger is saying, that's the language that you would add, is that past the grandfather date status, is that they would remain grandfathered in.
I think the language that says after two years of inactivity, then the grandfather clause no longer pertains to it.
That is correct.
But I'm trying to remember, I think there is a section of the bylaws that specifically deals with pre-existing non-conforming uses, but I think it goes back to prior to zoning, not prior to zoning amendments. So would it necessarily hurt, and I don't know if it's too late, to cite in that bylaw the actual bylaw number that states how non-conforming pre-existing uses are treated?
I don't know which one you're referring to.
Simply to say cite, so there's a, in our bylaws, in our zoning bylaws, there is a specific section that quotes the applicable law dealing with non-conforming pre-existing uses. And if I remember correctly, it specifically says this section covers prior to zoning bylaws. Was it 1960-something?
Yes.
That number seems to ring in my head.
Fifty-four.
So 54, thank you. So what I'm saying is would it hurt in this bylaw to say, cite and quote the existing zoning bylaw so that anyone reading this at a later time isn't left with an ambiguous bylaw? They know if it is inactive for two years or active for two years, you go back to the section that cites about non-conforming uses and that's the law you follow. So that there is no ambiguity, just a suggestion.
I think we're getting into town council area and you stop putting, stop putting too many things in and I hope that he's going to review all of these.
He hasn't reviewed these yet? No, because I don't know.
Oh, okay.
You might decide to take half of them off.
Okay. So maybe I'm going with a boots and suspenders approach to it?
But he'll begin his review tomorrow once I know which ones you're placing on the warrant.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that's, because you put too much in and it just muddies it.
Neil, you got your hand up.
New buildings that are coming in, you have to conform to today's world. Small like, I'll use Niko's, I don't know if they use their name. I know it's a small place. That place was vacant for years. We've got somebody in there now that's being successful. We just don't have a parking. When you say how he's parking, no, he's not going to park in the middle of the street. He's going to cram cars in there, keep people because a restaurant has a time. You're going to start an early lunch dinner, you're going to have a lunch, early dinner, late dinner, then people go home. You have one o'clock licenses. Did you talk to the businesses? Is this going to hurt them? Even if you have a two-year moratorium, you might have a bad economy like we've had before in the past 2008, 9, 10, these buildings might just fold right up and you might not even be able to get anybody in those buildings for four or five years. How long was Niko's fate before he moved in? I'm not saying let everybody park on the street, let them get hit by a car. They have to conform, but I think what Rick was saying, which is common sense, you're going to put a new building up, you've got to have the land plus the parking today. Existing businesses, we don't want to go out of business. We don't want free to go out of business. We want them to flourish. That's a neighbor of our town. We need more businesses in this town. I honestly believe we might have missed the vote on the middle of one, but it's a different day.
Okay. Anything else there? I mean, how the board feels about going along with the zoning bylaws or is there something to say we don't want in here or?
I don't think Hugh had an opportunity to clarify on Article 44. Rick had spoken about the configuration and how it would cause many landowners not to be able to sell their property for house lots.
This is something that came up by the Conservation Commission. It was their brainchild and I would actually rather let them defend it what... their grandchild, and I would actually rather let them defend what they came up with, because they know the problems that they have been encountering with some of these house lots that are, that are just barely fitting on, onto the land, or not fitting onto the land. There's a couple of instances where, you know, violations of wetlands and so forth, so that, I know that was the reason for doing it, I don't know all the circumstances for it, so I'd almost rather let somebody from CONCOM defend that.
One of the things about the fifty-foot buffer, that's, that's good usable upland, that, that's land that's just given fifty-foot no-touch from a wetlands. It's not wetlands, so there's nothing there really to protect. Not all towns have the fifty-foot buffer. We have a fifty-foot buffer off the wetlands you can't build on, you can't put anything on it, but you just used up, if you have two square feet on either side of the lot, you just used up a hundred feet of your lot, it doesn't make any sense, just because, and it's usable, it's dry, it's high and dry, it's a buffer. And now you're gonna put it in, now you're gonna try to include that into your hundred-foot by hundred-foot square, you're making that, what the planning board used to have as a hundred by hundred-foot square, you're making it two hundred, a hundred and fifty by a hundred and fifty, instead of, well, you're making it two hundred by two hundred. You're making it a two hundred by two hundred, and you're trying to fit it onto a lot that's a hundred and twenty-five feet by two hundred feet deep to be legal. It's bigger, your square is bigger than the lot that you're trying, that you can build on. Doesn't make any sense. You can't have any wetlands whatsoever, and Westbury was full of them.
Okay, so that's the one, board, I just wanna talk a little bit about that one, huh?
So I was just thinking, so right now it doesn't say anything about wetlands, the box can be in wetlands. And would it accomplish anything if we were to amend this to say, shall not contain wetlands? Obviously, it would be a little more strict, but I'm not sure if it would actually accomplish that much, because you already have to be fifty feet from the wetlands. I don't know.
I think that, that concept, the way that thing is laid out, that's gonna put a very disadvantage on the property owners, to do what they want with their land, especially when those pie-shaped lots, you know, they don't have too much to work with in the first place, you know? And then the building inspector, he told me that this evening, says, he didn't think it could work, and he certainly got more expertise than I have to judge on something like this, you know?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to remind you that this evening, you are voting as to whether or not you ought to place warrant articles onto the warrant, you do not have to take a position on it. So if you choose not to put on the warrant, just vote against it, it doesn't go on the warrant, but if you want to put on the warrant and allow everybody to speak their mind, then that's all you're voting on tonight, is whether you put on the warrant.
Fine, if you wanna put it on the warrant, then you can discuss it upstairs, you know? At least the conservation commission will be there, and they'll be able to come up with whatever, you know? How do you feel about it?
I mean, it's too bad we don't have another opportunity to have the conservation commissioner or someone that's pointing to us. I'd hate to put something on.
To not put it on the warrant, have them have at least an opportunity to discuss it, you know? How do you feel, Denise?
I agree with what you say, you said that, you know, to, for them not to have an opportunity to discuss it with us, and maybe clarify some of this, but I, at the same time, I think the wording is pretty direct. I don't think there's much room for interpretation here.
Yeah, no, I'm just not entirely sure about the impacts on what it would mean. I mean, it would get to see examples of, say, how would this affect houses that have been built, and like, real-life examples, some houses that have gone up in the past couple of years that wouldn't have because of this, and should they not have, or what's the actual impact?
And how would, how would this affect anyone who is currently in the process of trying to sell some of their land? This would go into effect immediately, I would presume, as soon as it's voted on. So someone who might have been trying to sell their land, do they suddenly no longer qualify for a house lot?
Neil? This only applies to new lots being created. So if you, if you have a lot in existence, this has nothing, nothing to do with it. This is only for new, newly-created lot. But the fifty-foot buffer, the wetlands is protected, and you have the fifty-foot no-build buffer, those are already in place, this has nothing to do with it. They're only bringing this into new lots being created, and it's in the, basically in the area of the front part of the property. Because it is a zoning amendment, the planning board is going to have to hold public hearings. Right? So it's...
May fifteenth, may fifteenth.
May fifteenth. It'll be, the public hearing will be the May fifteenth, and it will be televised, so everybody that wants to, will have a chance to see it, and anybody that wants to come in and speak, because the planning board has to make a recommendation. And we, we took this, and we, you know, went along with the CONCOM, but at the public hearing, you know, we have to make a recommendation, so when we hear the whole thing, you know, maybe, maybe we may not be in favor of, you know, the whole board, it's five members, I'm only, I'm only one of them. So there will be another review before it hits the town meeting, and the, anybody who wants to can, you know, is concerned, they can either come to the town, the public hearing, or watch it on cable TV.
David, so we just leave it open then, and they'll...
Again, it's your choice, the options for the board is, is that you decide that you do not want to place it on the warrant, it's done. If you decide to place it on the warrant, it's on the warrant. I would encourage Rick and anybody else to go to the planning board hearing on May fifteenth, because Hugh, as a member of the planning board, he's gonna be required by law to be the person to move it at town meeting. Now, if Rick's case wins at the planning board, and the planning board can't recommend it, at town meeting, they could choose not to move it. And if they don't move it, it dies there. Obviously, if the planning board agrees, and they decide to move it, then Rick would have another opportunity with others as well, to speak at town meeting, to convince others not to vote for it.
Can you, can we use the, you know, the board on the wall, so we could show different scenarios of what that, what effect it would have on building lots? Because the general public, when they're sitting there at a meeting, and they read it, they say, oh yeah, that sounds good, you know? They don't, they don't think about the numbers, but if they see it, if they see a blueprint, and they see somebody trying to put the hundred-foot square, a hundred by hundred, into a lot that's got a couple feet of wetlands, and they see, you know, they're very quickly gonna be able to say, well, gosh, that doesn't work.
Yep, so...
I'd just like to be able to...
Yep. So to answer Rick's question, because we'll put together the presentation, is if the board supports placing on the warrant, and on May fifteenth, the planning board supports it as well, and Rick, if you wanna bring to me any pictures that you wanna display, we'll make sure it's in the packet that will go up on the projection screen.
Okay.
Okay, I think it's been discussed, is there a motion to put it on the warrant?
Yes, I'll make a motion to put it on the warrant.
Second.
It's a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so go on the one. Thank you, you know, a lot of work in this, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you. Hugh, thank you, Rick.
Thank you, Rick, for coming in.
And I would like to invite anybody that is interested in, by all means, to come to the public hearing.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next thing is be, put on articles or place on the warrant for the annual town meeting. Okay, I must have a copy of them, right?
So, in the past, Mr. Chairman, what we can, what you usually do is, is that you would just refer to the article. If nobody has any objections to it, we would just move on, so that we could take one vote at the end and place thirty-seven on, or you hold, like, say, five, you place all the others on, and then those five, you then talk about it, and make a decision at that point if you wanna place each one of those on, instead of taking forty-seven different votes.
Right, right.
So do, I'm sorry, David, just go through them and...
Yep, so you'd start on page one, start on page one, Denise?
Okay. Which ones are warrant articles? I'm not, sorry, not warrant, consent. Are these, any of these consent?
Yep, so one, two, normally three.
Three.
Uh-huh.
One, two, and three are consent articles. And I don't recall, we've changed up the format a little bit, because we used to do all those revolving accounts, but we passed a bylaw last year, so we don't have to do that anymore. I don't remember, I don't think six is, but I'll have to look to see whether that's the case, but I think it's just one, two, and three is normally consent articles.
Okay.
So we're gonna move one, two, and three, consent articles, okay? And four?
And four is your budget, which you've already, you've already voted on.
Yeah. Article five?
That's, I think that's a standard article, we usually say.
Six?
Um, I had a, nope, six is okay.
That's for the chapter ninety, seven, the voter code, right? That's seven, right? Any problem with that?
Nope.
All right, we'll go to eight. Too many preservation, there was a...
You want nine and, nine?
Nine.
Okay. So, nine and ten?
Nine, ten, all community.
Yeah. My, my only issue with that is twenty-five thousand dollars going to preserve records versus trying to find a way to maybe either reduce some of the records we're constantly preserving, and save them an alternative way, either through electronic or whatever, but it is what it is. There is nothing else in place, and until someone comes up with something better, we'll continue to spend money on paper.
A lot of what, like, for example, the town clerk, I could be wrong in this, but I think she's in the thirteen, nineteen thirties at this point, is what she's preserving, because she only does so much every year.
Right.
So, and that is a requirement of the law, to do birth certificates, wedding certificates, that type of stuff.
If you don't mind, what Denise just said, and you just said, by law, she has to preserve those records?
Yep, those are permanent records.
So she has to preserve them the way she's requested, I know it's done before her.
Right. Nope, she is just required to preserve them, and so they are now spending this money, because they believe this is the best and appropriate way to do it. I can't answer that question, I just know that they are under statute, that they are required to preserve those records, and so they have a large vault downstairs, and so when they started this, they started at the beginning, like, in the eighteen hundreds, so they do so many every year, and I wanna say, the last time I talked to her, she was up into the nineteen thirties, as to where she's at. So we can't just digitalize those. I think that Denise's frustration, and I share it, is that we wish the legislature would change the law, so if you're born today, let's create a digital copy of that, so we don't have to incur this expense twenty, thirty, forty years from now.
Just real quick, I know it's getting late, but I'm just saying, I think we're trying to say, we're spending all this money to preserve a house, and she's doing it, is there a better way to preserve it at a cheaper cost, and just keep it going forward?
In that part, I don't know.
Okay, moving on, eleven, other community preservation, okay? Twelve. Another public works for the one oil podcast is important. Okay, any problem with that?
Nope.
No. Thirteen. Another community preservation. Okay. What do they have in the fund, David, you know?
Yep, so this year, we were going, we're gonna receive a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, so articles, I think it was nine through thirteen, will spend a hundred and eighty-four thousand, therefore, we'll spend all of the funds, and Article fourteen is a borrowing article for the friendship park.
Okay. Am I right with that?
Article fourteen's a borrowing?
Yes.
Yeah, borrowing.
Don't they... For borrowing, don't they usually say to raise versus appropriate?
So, these are, you'll see next, in fact, you'll see it in fifteen, it will say, vote to raise and appropriate, because you could do it on the tax side, you could borrow, or you can transfer. CPC, you've already raised it, because you have a separate CPC tax, so that's why it doesn't say vote to raise, all it is, is you're appropriating the money that you have already guaranteed you're going to tax.
The three hundred and twenty thousand?
That is correct.
Oh, I thought you said we were borrowing, I'm sorry.
We are borrowing. So, my point is, it's not going to say vote to raise and appropriate, transfer available funds, or, because it can only come from one source, which is CPC, and then we will borrow the three hundred and twenty thousand, and in future years, out of the CPC monies that come in, we'll pay that bond.
Okay, fifteen, is that the unfunded mandate?
Yes, that is our unfunded long-term health care costs.
Okay. Any problems with that? Sixteen, raise and appropriate, available funds, some money, web task force.
David, can we move this to Vic's budget next year, instead of having it as an article? Well, I know we've always done it this way, but what's, is there really value in having a separate article for it?
It's a good question, I don't know, it's just, it's been done like this for so long, but we could certainly ask him, and if the board is in favor, I have no problem with that. Again, it may just be...
Seems unnecessary for the article.
Well, it's a matching grant from the state, so it may very well be that there's some provision, it can't come from an operating budget, but I'll find out.
Okay, we're to seventeen then? That's what they look like, municipal building, each one, okay? Any question on that? Moving on, eighteen, state town vote. That's it. Automatic refrigerators, okay? Any questions on that? All right, you're nineteen. Vehicle exhaust system, so that's the routine maintenance, any questions on that? Out of the twenty? Okay, just... Any, and that's from free cash, any, any questions? Here's a town, right? They look funds, police department, go up to the public safety council system, any questions? Twenty-two? No problem? Twenty-three? Those are raising probably. Okay, there's a pickup truck, questions? Moving on, twenty-four? Okay, that's a building load of transfer station. How old is that building over there, any of it? It's not... I don't know, time goes on, but, you know...
It looks, it looks older than it probably is, but it's in poor shape, and...
Okay. All right. Twenty-five?
What is a cold storage facility?
So we would not put plumbing, or heating, or any, it would just, it's basically going to be a large shed, so we could store vehicles in it, similar to what we currently have.
Yes, up back, what used to, where the sand used to be, that's falling apart, some of the roof panels blew off.
Okay.
This would be enclosed, though, it would be a steel building, so it would actually be fully enclosed.
It was just the choice of wording.
Our East Center and East Street, Trevor Lake. That's the National Cash. Was that total project, what was the cost of that, Dave?
So, we approved five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, because we're still waiting on this one last item, and no, we don't have a response yet. But I made a commitment to the board that we were going to make every effort not to borrow money, and so this is an opportunity that we will take half of it, we're gonna pay off half of it this year, and... and hopefully half of it next year, so we only borrow it for two years. But right now, our total cost on the project is about four hundred and eighty-five thousand, with still some more work to do.
Okay, that's the one you asked me to find out, there's a pole gotta be moved back, and, uh...
Correct.
They're holding National Grid there, and, uh, they just wanted to know if there's any utilities on the bottom of it, because National Grid is the last one to move the pole back. So, I, I don't know, anybody get a picture of that, or Senator? Okay, that was taken care of, Dave.
Yeah, we took, we took pictures.
Oh, you took pictures, I'm gonna move that thing along.
And then we're gonna, we have to do a little bit more work, I have to, I have to spend some time with my engineer, because...
Well, the, the only thing is, I don't mind, like, you know, like, you were busy with the article, I don't mind, you know, intervening, like, and help, you know, I'm next to the phone there. And, uh, and that's, uh, that's good to, to move that project along, you know?
So, so what happened, they needed pictures?
They wanted utilities that, that are on, if they're, you know, like the cable, having on the bottom.
Right, right.
Before National Grid, they moved the pole.
Yeah.
All those, so the, the agent wanted to know from me, if, if utilities were on, I don't know, so he sent the girls out to take a picture of, of, of what was on the pole, so they can move this thing along.
That's what they were waiting on?
Well, I don't know what they were waiting on, but, uh, you know, it just...
Okay.
It's just move this thing along, you know, and I know that was a concern of yours.
Right, I'd just like to see it done, we have all that money invested, and...
I give a little push.
Okay, good.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I guess no questions, uh, twenty-seven, town meeting?
And if I may, just to give it a quick, we funded a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for engineering costs for that traffic design. We thought that we were going to need that much, based on a couple of quotes. We ended up getting quotes, and we're gonna spend less than fifty thousand dollars in engineering, so we saved the, the taxpayer a whole bunch of money. We now know that we have Route twenty-eight and Matfield Street, we have Howard Street and Route one oh six, we're gonna need to do some engineering, instead of going back to the taxpayer and asking for more money, what I'm asking is, is that we transfer the leftover funds from that article to an engineering article, so now we can get more engineering done, and now we're, we're not, we're not going back to the taxpayer looking for more money.
A, another thing, I got complaint from taxpayers at the blacktop, I don't know what you're making the terms there, is, uh, is coming up there, is anyway, we can, we can have, uh, you know, a highway, so we can go and look at that, you know?
At East Center?
I think, uh, yeah, East Center.
I heard the same thing.
Yeah, uh, I, I think it, I think I, I gave them a message, but then I've been hearing it again, you know? So, that should be taken care of.
Yep.
Or we accept it. Okay. Twenty-eight, twenty-eight, uh, sidewalks.
So will this, how much will this give us for sidewalks now, do we, two hundred? Okay.
Okay. Twenty-nine, the road and the profit, I have five more, some pictures, knitting for the athletic, January one oh six, our tag in the action relative, fourteen. There to go? All right, thirty, raise and appropriate transit, that a process and upgrade? There to go?
That's a hundred and seventy-one thousand for that?
Yes.
Three forty-one, free cash.
What is that, eh, is that the town hall system, or...
That's for the entire town.
The entire town?
So this is our current data processing system. I forget the years, I wanna say it's ten or twelve years old, it's reached the end of life, we can no longer warranty, they can't guarantee parts anymore, um, and we've had some issues with our firewall as a result. So, we have solicited a couple of quotes, and the lowest quote that came in was a hundred and seventy-one thousand, which would be to, uh, upgrade the detailing parts of that, and also provide an additional backup system in case there was a, a system order ever go down.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, to go? All right, to go to thirty-one, uh, that's a special education, we, we certainly questioned the school committee. I guess to transfer one kid to have an English language or something like that, cause... What was it, two hundred, uh, a, a day, or something like that, was explained to us, I forget the... Phenomenal, uh, uh, cost, with a special education. There to go? Do I say something? Oh, I'm not in a hurry, I just like, I wanna do this right, I know.
But they just said something at the State House, and, uh, for the money that Baker's gonna release, have we already got any feedback on that?
Haven't heard anything about that, I haven't.
We're not there, he's gonna, he's gonna bring dollars, post education in the state, I don't know, will you follow on the food chain on that? She was up here, uh, ten, fifteen, we go over here, it was a Friday, and all of them released this court. This family before me here, this is absurd. The school choice, they see here, and they know laws and federal laws, we have to go by them, but see this kind of expense, that could be one business.
Just so I understand that article right, that is, that is for, um, expenses we already incurred?
That is correct.
In two thousand and nineteen? So, so, and, and this is just, it just, I just looked at this last night, and I couldn't remember these numbers, because the book was here, um, but I'm wondering, are we going to run into something similar next year? Because some of the lines on the school's budget for special education were reduced from, from two thousand and nineteen, you know, for example, um, special education, special education teaching services was one million, three hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars budgeted for nineteen. But in, um, two thousand and twenty, they only requested roughly one point three million, so it was a significant decrease. So my concern is, will we run into the same, if we already overspent this year, are we maybe going to overspend again, if we expect it to go up?
Um, all I could say is, is that the reason that the school's budget, according to, I met with two members of the school committee today, along with the superintendent, is that they are stating that they had an unexpected cost this year, which means that they are not going to have enough money in their budget, and therefore they need this transfer. Based on that, I can only assume that what they budgeted for going forward is going to be adequate, because maybe one person is graduating, and so that comes off.
Okay.
I, I don't know.
All right, do you think it might be wor, I mean, I'm fine with this? I'm just wondering if it might be worth bringing it to someone's attention, that, you know, we were short this year, that line went down, did someone miss something, or are we okay?
I, I'll ask the question, and then I will say, because I, there's always some type of a strategy with the way that we line these articles up, because I don't like, for example, I don't want the school superintendent and the chair of the school committee to go up for one article, sit down, come back five later. So, to answer your question, select and raise, is that Article thirty-two is that we're also going to create, or request the town to create, a special stabilization account specifically for special education. We don't have money to fund it this year, but going forward, the hope is, like we're doing with sidewalks, is that we'll put X amount of dollars into it every single year, and that way, at a future date, if they have an unexpected cost, then they would have the reserves to be able to pay for that. Now, that's an acceptance of a general law, and then in order to, or use those funds, is that it will require a vote of both the school committee and the Board of Selectment to access the funds.
And that's going to be...
That's Article thirty-two. So that is, to your point earlier, about what do we, what are we doing to prepare that we do not have this problem in the future? Article thirty-two is establishing a fund in anticipation of trying to prevent this from occurring again in the future.
But by doing that, aren't we just taking al, money, tax money, uh, taxpayer money that's allocated through the school budget for special education, and just creating a separate fund? So now we're reducing the school's budget requirement, because we have this separate fund. There's no other money coming in from any other resources, it's like having two bank accounts.
So, the way they envision it, and I'm going with what they're telling me that other school districts have done, is that you are going to allocate X amount of dollars to the schools as you normally do, and then if you have available funds, like this year here, I'm gonna request to replace two hundred and twenty thousand dollars into the town stabilization account, is that maybe next year you say, okay, let's put a hundred and eighty thousand dollars into the town stabilization account, and forty thousand dollars into the special education stabilization account. That will give us the flexibility to make those decisions in the future. But obviously, there is only one pie of money, so you're absolutely correct, is that if you're gonna put money in there, you obviously are running the risk that it's, it's being offset by not placing it somewhere else.
Right, so what would prevent other departments from taking the same approach? We don't know how much this is going to cost us, it could run into a hundreds of thousands of dollars, we want to create a separate account off our books. I mean, that's really, this is almost like a sub-ledger accounting.
Yep, so, uh, there's no, to my knowledge, there are no other mass general laws, for example, the police department, let's create a separate account in case they run out of money. The legislature recognizes, I think to Neil's point, they should be coming up with more money, right? But they recognize that they have not established any, enough money at the state level to help. They have passed rules, regulations, and mandates, knowing that we haven't been able to afford it, so they have created a special general law to allow us to be able to do this. We don't have to philosophically agree with it, I understand that, but this is their way, or the legislature's way of saying, okay, we recognize there's a problem, here's a mechanism that if you want to fund it in the future, and then you just have to make that choice.
Any other questions on that?
No, I just was wondering what you, what do you think about it? I, I'm just reading it for the first time, I don't know if you had any experience with it, or...
With the, um, account, not the one fifty, is what you're talking about?
The, the, um, no, the one fifty, I'm perfectly fine with, that's already spent, um, Article thirty-two.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have, I don't have any concerns with it.
Okay.
David, did I hear you correctly that to spend it requires authorization from school committee and selectmen?
Yes.
I don't have any problem with it, Denise.
Okay, I'm just, it's, I'm, this is new to me, and...
Oh, okay.
Okay, moving on, Article thirty-three, that's the library roof.
So, again, I just wanna make sure, these next three are all grouped together?
Yeah.
We bonded seventy-seven thousand dollars a year ago to do the library roof. The bid came in at forty-eight thousand, which is fantastic. So what we're going to do is, in this article, I am asking the town to take that forty, forty-eight thousand dollars from free cash, pay off the debt, so we don't pay any interest. Because we borrowed seventy-seven thousand upfront, the bond proceeds, or the leftover amount, twenty-five seventy-five, will just be transferred from our bank account against the debt, so we don't pay any interest. It's paid for, it's clear, it's done. So, we did the roof basically on a nine-month interest-free loan, because we're gonna pay it off before we get hit with the interest.
Right.
So that part is really good. Thirty-four and thirty-five is the library was hoping to be able to take the leftover proceeds from that and transfer it to do two capital-related projects, which is for cameras in Articles thirty-four, and networking on Articles thirty-five. We normally would have run this through the Capitol Budget Committee, but at the time that we were doing it, we did not think it was a Capitol Budget request, and we thought that we were gonna be doing a transfer. We've spent a bunch of time on this, it turns out it doesn't work that way, so I'm gonna send an email out to the Capitol Budget Committee, because normally they should be vetting this as well. They didn't, um, so I'm gonna inform them as to what happened, and that way they understand. At the end of the day, um, we're really doing the exact same thing, is that we're only spending seventy-seven thousand five hundred, and we're going to get the new roof, and we're gonna get these two additional i, items from the library.
Okay, so that's thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five, that's the goal?
Mm-huh.
Okay, moving on to thirty-six. That's the stabilization, uh, fund, okay? Okay. That's, that's been built up, uh, Dave there, what is that?
Yeah, if, uh, the town, if the town votes to put this two hundred and twenty thousand in, will be, will be just a tad over three million dollars.
That's, that's terrific. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Ellen, is that the money you were talking about? A one has like six or seven million, and we only have two million, and do, remember you saying, remember you talking about that, is that that fund we're talking about?
That is correct.
So it's like a rainy day fund?
It's a rainy day fund, yeah. Okay.
Are you saying we'll have three million even after all of these articles are paid?
Yes.
Okay, that's great.
Which is pretty much exactly what the D O R recommends, right? It's just about ten percent, maybe nine point something percent?
We're getting close, yes.
Now, we spent up to the two and a half, or where are you, under?
Uh, we're budgeting this year to two and a half percent raise, however, um, we're doing it off of our lower levy, so we're still two million dollars below what we should be able to raise under our levy.
Very good.
That's good.
Okay, thirty-seven, water commissioners, water surplus. Okay, uh, there to go? Okay, the tank, uh, six hundred and twenty, water commissioners. It's a borrow. There to go? Any questions? Thirty-nine, flat payment and lien of taxes. Second Board of Assessors.
David, um...
What is, what is that, David?
So Articles thirty-nine and forty?
Yeah.
Are two contracts that the Board of Assessors have been negotiating for the last couple of years with two solar projects. I do not have a copy of the agreements, I have not read the agreements, um, they've been, it's been in process for a couple of years. I wish I had the agreements for this evening, because I would like to be able to vet them and appropriately inform the board as to my recommendation on them. I am led to believe that they are married after the one that we did with the solar panels on the roof, and if so, that's a really good agreement. But again, I do not have the agreement, I, I haven't seen it. I am led to believe that they are hoping to finalize it next week. If that is the case, then on your May fifteenth meeting, I would, you're going to be voting on whether you recommend Articles or not, and you would also be at that point, uh, signing the pilot agreement if you were in favor of it.
I, I have some hesitation with putting this on without at least, without the town administrator having reviewed anything.
So do I.
We can always pass it without that, yeah. How, how do you wanna combat this?
Well, it, it, I mean, it seems sort of, it seems rushed to me, he's not reviewed anything, he doesn't have a recommendation to make, I'm not discrediting David, I'm just saying that I, I don't think we should be putting it on with at least...
Without, without...
Having some opinion or some review, something.
Yeah, we should have some facts on it. David, how you feel about it?
I'm, I'm, I'm torn, and the reason I'm torn is this. Uh, right now, under current solar legislation, which is old, is that we are in court with both of these establishments now, and we're attempting to be able to minimize our legal expense, sign a pilot agreement, where we get something versus nothing, and end lit, end litigation. However, I feel strongly that this says that the agreements are negotiated by the Board of Selectment and the Board of Assessors, and I have not had any involvement in it. The Board of Assessors are the ones that have had the involvement. I have an obligation, a fiduciary duty to you, to be able to make a recommendation on the contracts themselves. I have not been able to do that. Um, I will trust that what I'm told to be accurate, that these pilot agreements are modeled after the one that we have signed. If so, again, I would be in favor of a recommendation, but until I see it, I, I just, I, I have no, I can't tell you the dollars, I can't tell you the size of the project, I can't tell you how much, whether we're getting sixty cents on the dollar, or eighty cents on the dollar, I can't tell you if it's a ten-year, twenty-year, thirty-year, I can't tell you any of those things.
All right, we got an assessor present, I don't, I don't know if she's been appeased, or just...
This has not come before the board.
It hasn't come before the board?
We haven't had any conversations on this in a meeting.
Okay.
So I have not seen any of this either.
Well, there's another thing here, too.
And this has been in litigation?
Yeah, so right now, these two solar companies are, I believe one is operating, maybe the other one isn't operating yet, so maybe we're not in A T B with them. But I wanna say Profeti is operating in town. There was a court case a couple of years ago, that was adjudicated that the court, that one court decision went against past president, and determined that solar companies are exempt from taxation, and now every other solar company is trying to have free taxes, which I just, I don't understand that line of thinking. So, they are, I know we are in court with Profeti, because Profeti is looking to try to drop their tax liability... to drop their tax liability down to zero, we're trying to get full and fair, and so this is whatever the agreement is somewhere in between.
Is David Gay's office representing us in this litigation?
Yep.
No, I just don't recall seeing it on the spreadsheet, any cost of...
It's, it's in the Board of Assessors, the entire, Board of Assessors, when you look at that line, I want to say, yeah, the date has probably been $4,000 or $5,000 that is tied up to this.
That's not much.
Okay, Article, that's Article 39 and 40, is there a motion not to put them on the warrant?
My only hesitation is, what if it does come in in the next week or two, and what if we miss out on an opportunity because we didn't put it on the warrant? I mean...
So we put them on the warrant, at least...
When is their meeting?
It'd be discussed, but the only thing is, is, you know, we don't have another meeting, that's the problem.
I'm doubtful it will come in, be final with the town administrator having a chance to review it before we take a vote to recommend or not in the next two weeks, or however long it is, but I guess anything's possible, it could happen.
Yeah.
Yes, to answer your question, Ms. Rayes, May 1 is their next meeting, and I am led to believe that that is when he, the principal assessor, would be presenting it to the board. However, that's obviously only a couple of days, and at least one assessor hasn't reviewed it either. So I'm not, I don't know where they are in the process, I don't know if they're, I'm told that it's near the end, but he obviously does not have a final product at this point.
How do you feel, David?
I feel similar to, to Anthony, I wouldn't want to miss an opportunity by not putting it, putting it on the warrant, but at the same time, I think we're putting the cart before the horse, and I think this just is a bad practice.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree too. Okay, all right, I'll agree with you, there are two there that we, we put on the warrant, let the assessors come in and see.
It would, I don't know if it would be out of line, but to send the, the board and the Board of Assessors a letter, just letting them know they've put us in this awkward situation, and although we're agreeing to put it on the warrant...
We don't have all the facts.
We don't have all the facts, and we'd, we'd like to get them as soon as possible.
And make a motion, that effect? We send them a letter?
Yes, make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, we send them a letter.
I mean, we know they're busy, but it's difficult enough reading these and not understanding some language, but getting to something like this, that we have nothing on, without not David's, you know, words of wisdom or opinion to offer us.
Okay. Okay, let's go. A home rule, oh, petition, special, let's say, special police officer.
So this is a home rule petition being proposed from the police chief.
Yeah.
It's got a lot of legalistic language to it, because it's cut and paste from Mass Chiefs Association. Bottom line, there's two things that I want to make sure that you're aware of in this, is that one, the most, the, the spirit behind this article is the fact that state law prohibits people from being police officers past age 65. But state law does not have a voice on special police officers. And so many other districts have taken the position that you cannot be a special police officer past the age of 70. We are being led to believe, from Mass Chiefs Legal Counsel, based on some court cases that have been settled, is that if you do not have legislation, that you would open yourself up for a discrimination lawsuit based on age discrimination. So this would allow the chief to not allow a police officer past the age of 70 to be a special police officer. That is the main spirit behind it. The other part to it that I would want you to be aware of, is that in Section 3, is that the Board of Selectmen will be the appointing authority, as you currently are, you would be based on the recommendation of the police chiefs, and nothing changes on that end. However, if the police, that special police officer is removed from office, removed from position, they would be removed by the police chief. And then if that person wants to appeal it, they would then appeal it to the Board of Selectmen. Currently, if a person is to be removed, it is only being removed in a hearing by the Board of Selectmen. But based on HR rules and some privacy, it makes more sense to do it this way, and then if that person so chose to appeal it, they would have the ability to appeal it, and then you would hold a hearing at the Board of Selectmen level, of which you could reverse the chief's decision or uphold it.
Any questions? Let's go then. All right, body two, here's waste measures. There you go. He's increasing those fees a little bit, or...
Nope, this...
We're removing it, right? We're removing the schedule?
Okay.
And that's going to be moved by your board, by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
We're removing it, and then we're...
We'll then have the authorities to change it as we see...
Okay, come under us, okay, okay, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, 43. Bylaw on the cigar wrappers?
So, because this is your current bylaw, there is a citizen request to rescind it, and this was a bylaw study committee review, and they recommended that we do rescind it.
Okay, let's go, 44.
44 you voted on?
Yeah, we voted on. 45.
Good.
Any bylaw amendments yet? That's, that's, all right, that's, that's a go. 46, bylaw, right?
Yes, so Articles 46 and 47, because when I'm, I'm going to ask you to take your vote at the end, subject to final review, but Articles 46 and 47, the planning board or the bylaw study committee submitted this as one article, because it pertains to one zoning bylaw in reference to medical marijuana. So they're looking to define the word facility, and they're looking to change the designated areas from the property line to the point of the facility. I put it as two zoning bylaws, it may very well be, end up being one, I'm just giving you a heads up. Once town council reviews it, we'll make that final decision.
Okay. Good. Go. Any questions? 48. Go road, accept that. There you go. So I guess now we need a vote, Dave?
So I would ask you, we, it looks like we're going to place all of them on the warrant. I would ask you to take a vote, that you would place all of those articles in front of you on the warrant, subject to final town council review, and any changing that we have to do in the spirit of that by your staff.
So moved.
Second.
There's a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay. Moving along, agenda approved minutes of April 3.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Let's see, except, meeting minutes, March 25th, April 17.
For review, motion?
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Communication reports from boards and commissions. ADA trainer, we already did that correspondence, chairman of course of auction, I mean, action. Public comments period?
Ellen, real quick, Ricky said, Dave, I don't know who sets up the PowerPoint for the town meeting, and that's a powerful tool. I always believe in it, I go to conventions, meetings, I always have it, they have a podium like that, or they have a side, but I think, whatever we're going to buy, could buy a car, or a truck, or anything, you fill it up there, like the playground, I want to go to them, and just ask them if they can fill it up, they show the old, the new, which can be done, how it works, things like that. And I believe that's the whole purpose of that PowerPoint. So, and if we have a scanner, just say somebody makes an amendment, and get scanned it in, and fill it right up on the PowerPoint, like, Anthony, did you have a...
How long?
Amendment to the marijuana, I think it was like a book. I mean, nobody, we have this here, in concert, in our heads, what you said in palette, break it down. But if you fill it up on the PowerPoint, they can read right from, I think it's new.
So I have something.
No, I got some, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so I, I'm choosing to read this letter into the public record, this letter was received just recently, it's a complaint about me, so I thought I would read it into the record, so that everyone's aware. The letter reads, "Dear Selectmen of the Town of West Bridgewater and David Gagney, As a poll worker for the Town of West Bridgewater for many years, I thought I had seen and heard it all. However, on election night this year, selectwoman Rayes announced in a crowded hallway that candidate, Mr. Candidate McCarthy had lost the election for assessor. She said, I quote, 'Steve, you lost. This was immature, mean-spirited, and incorrect. As a selectwoman representing the town, Ms. Rayes should be held to the highest standards of integrity. There was absolutely no justification for this announcement, especially since it was not true. Her announcement was an embarrassment to both candidates. Mrs. Qualley must have been humiliated when she moments later found out that she had not won, and Mr. McCarthy must have been embarrassed to be singled out and called by name. Both candidates deserve an apology by Ms. Rayes, and it should be made public, as she chose a public forum to humiliate both candidates. As I am fearful of repercussions, I will simply sign a very concerned West Bridgewater poll resident.'" So first, to address, I didn't say, say, Steve, you lost, I had, it wasn't a public meeting, but there were two witnesses there to my little mistake. Like a fool, and I'll admit it was awfully foolish of me, I looked at precinct one's tape and forgot about precinct two. And in disbelief, I said, Debbie, you won, by one vote. And I immediately went to Steve, because he looked solemn, and understandably why, and offered my condolence, and also thanked him for his service, because I thought it would be a respectful thing to do, and a polite thing to do. Never, complete embarrassment, immediately took over when someone said, what about precinct two? And I, you know, immediately turned and apologized to Steve, and I apologized to Debbie, who I felt so bad for having lifted her spirits, then just to drop her down like that. Never would I have ever intended to do something like that to either one of them. That would just simply be, I will agree with the writer, that doing something like that would intent, would certainly be immature, but what would bother me even more is that it would be mean-spirited. That is the, the worst part of it. So I, I apologized to Mr. McCarthy that night, I apologized many times to Ms. Qualley, she was quite upset, not over what I said, but about the whole events of the day and evening, she had reason to be upset. Several things occurred during that day. But again, I lifted her spirits only to drop her. So if anyone is looking for a public apology to them, I certainly offer that, because I don't consider myself so big that I cannot apologize to people. As far as repercussions, I have very little power. I might be a selectman, but, you know, repercussions to people, you know, I wish the person had confronted me. And that's what we need to do more of this, in this town. If you have an issue with someone, confront them, talk to them about it. And I hope that is the end of this. We will say, we will, I know you're handwriting, Neil.
I don't know what to do with it, really.
No, I'm teasing you, I'm teasing you. I know you would confront me.
Okay, the only comment I got to make is, as I say during the storm, the YA lost their press box, and of course, I've sort of got a little history with a, with a YA over the years, and when Vic Flaherty was there, and the town and, and the YA have been very, very close over the years. You know, it used to go out to all the houses and collect for the money there, and of course, the uniforms are still going up there, town is now doing the fields over there, they've been doing it for a while there. I established them over to the San Francisco Rotten Gun Club, and, because they need a place to conduct their tournaments, and organize their tournaments, and now they've become members over there, they're over there now, at San Francisco, and cooking pizzas and everything else, so it's just a happy family there. And so I just thought, I, first I thought, which way am I going to go with this? First I thought maybe going to the town, but I did ask a friend of mine who's a developer, and he was very, very much interested, he'd already gone over and looked at the situation over there. And I talked to Glenn Turner tonight about it, and he's thrilled about it, and, and you're already, I guess, they have the general's name, and they're going to see what they can work out there. And so he wants to volunteer, and I think it's, it's terrific, and see what happens there. But I know that they can certainly use it, and they need, and need all the help they can, in town. I hope to see both of you over there Saturday for the opening.
Well...
Is it Saturday?
Saturday, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, we're marching in the parade, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
That's the grand opening.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
We ball.
Okay, let's see, David, town administrator's report?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just one quick little note. Beginning of May, between May 10th and May 16th, National Grid is, is scheduled to install a pole over near the rail trail. Apparently, there are two poles there now, in order to be able to hook up a fiber line, they have to install one additional pole, and that will carry that span. So they've already gone through the Conservation Commission, they've received all their permitting, and it's just an FYI to the board, into the town, that if you see National Grid working in that area that week, that's what they're doing. Other than that, that's it.
You know, now with the contact with that, and me being, you know, on the board of O'Connell Plant, with Bob Moran, it's easy to talk to him, and I got off the girls, the name of, of the representative, I just don't want to, we need everybody we can, that's why I was saying, and he, he's got this area, and Bob's up in the other area, but he's been a tremendous help to me there, so, but I, I'm going to try to make a contact, as soon as I get his number, with him, and just tell him, because I try to include him, because we need him as well as Bob, because he represents this area, and that's his job for this area, so I just, I just don't want to lose continuity there. Okay. Is there anything else before we adjourn for the... No, no problem. I'll thank everybody, and everybody present, and is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.